Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Watertown City Council meeting of Monday, September 16, 2019. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rule call, please. Okay. Albertson?
Here.
Bueller?
Here.
Hoyer?
Here.
Pauline?
Here.
Lalum?
Here.
Manti?
Here.
Rademski?
Here.
Roby?
Here.
Vilhauer?
Present.
Thank you. All right, full house. First item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
A motion by Way and a Y, sorry Josh, and a second by Rademski. Is there any discussion? Councilman Vilhauer?
Mayor, do you want to explain what, one G, we're already past that and now we're first approving the fireworks, uh, display?
Sure. We received a request for approval of the pyrotechnics permit for the fireworks at the burning of the W event. It was the same, um, plan that they've done in the past safely and successfully. There's nothing wrong with the plan. It was just too late to get it on an agenda, so I unilaterally approved them and gave them permission, the choice to either tell them they can't burn the W or go ahead and approve what's been safe and successful in the past, hoping that you would forgive me and honor this. I guess you have the choice. That's why that's on the agenda. Any other discussion?
Mayor, could we just maybe send them a reminder to apply early next year?
Try to remember that. Will you remind me to send them a reminder? Yeah. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item two is public comment period. This is the time set aside for anybody to talk about whatever they'd like. If you're here to do that, please come forward. Seeing no one, we'll move on. Item three is approval of the agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Vilhauer and a second by Lalum. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number four is approval of resolution number 19-41, authorizing the mayor to sign a clean water state revolving fund, SRF loan application, in the amount of $5 million to fund the wastewater treatment facility administration building, project number 1917. Is there a motion?
Take the motion to approve.
A motion by Lalum and a second by?
Everyone.
Roby, were you one of them?
Nope.
No?
I'm thinking of Rademski.
Rademski, okay. Lalum and Rademski. And I will start by, um, opening the public hearing and asking Heath to describe what's going on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. As you recall, this item has been part of the discussion in past action items that the council's taken in regards to the design of a, well, first some scoping work and then subsequently the design of a new administrative and garage and shop area building out at the wastewater treatment facility. The current facility is, uh, reached, more or less reached its useful life and it's not an ideal arrangement to continue to utilize for much longer as far as the operations at the wastewater treatment facility go. The design has progressed and it is about complete. I think we're at about 90, 99% complete on the design. So now we're looking into subsequently bidding this project and looking at getting our financing in row, uh, all lined up for this project. So what that led us to do was look at applying for an SRF loan through the state for the entirety of this project. I'd like to talk a little bit more in detail about the numbers on that application and the funding, but I'd first like to defer to Superintendent Berger, who's here this evening, and he can touch on some of the details of the project, answer any questions you might have regarding the project itself, but then I've got a short summary on the numbers and where we fall in relation to this SRF application.
All right, thank you.
So I'll just provide a brief history of this project. In 2011, the wastewater facility had an evaluation done and this recommended a space requirement evaluation to define the department's needs in terms of space needed. And so the space evaluation completed in 2018 developed the concept to replace the existing administration building and the operations workshop with one structure. Just to touch on those two buildings independently a little bit, the existing operations shop, part of that was constructed back in about 1930, the center portion, and then there were subsequently a couple additions to it, but that building has settled significantly so that the floors are cracked and heaving and the walls are no longer plumb or sound. You might recall back in June of 2017, the south parapet wall, a cinder block wall blew over on the roof in a windstorm. So we did a structural review of that building and determined that the building was beyond salvaging due to its condition and the cost of rehabilitation. So that building is going to be demolished and with the demolition of that operations shop, the wastewater facility will lose its operations workshop, five of its garage stalls, its pre-treatment workshop area and a bathroom. Taking a quick look at the existing administration building that was built by Lake Area Tech back in about 1993, it doesn't provide private offices for the supervisory staff. I'm the only one that has a private office and we don't have a conference room for training sessions and reviewing our projects. And the break room is a small break room, doesn't have full appliances, it won't accommodate the whole staff, it has insufficient locker space, and it has one small garage space which is too small to accommodate a pickup. And so the administration space evaluation recommended demolishing the operations shop and constructing this new administration building near the entrance to the wastewater facility. And this conceptual layout of this building includes six garage stalls to replace five lots with the demolition of the operations shop, four private offices for each of the supervisors, and four open offices for the classified staff. It'll have a large conference training room, which we've not had in the past, and it'll have a telemetry room which will house two telemetry systems, one that monitors the sewer system and the 48 lift stations, and a second one that monitors the wastewater treatment facility. They'll be in one telemetry room, which will also have a couple of workstations for the staff to enter their work orders and access to the process data of the facility as they're doing their jobs. It will have a break room with appliances, his or her locker rooms, copy room, file storage room, HVAC, E-room, electrical room and a mechanical room. And then, I guess after that space evaluation then, we did place, uh, do an application to place this on the state water plan back in 2018. It came before the council and public works committee back in July of 2018. So we are on the state water plan. At the state water plan point, the opinion of probable cost had a rather large contingency of 25%. That's prior to design. With design completed now, we have an opinion of cost and we're prepared to go forward with the bidding process to determine the actual cost, which will be determined by where the bids come in. So again, given the partial collapse of the operations shop, we budget for design this year and construction next year. And back at the time of the state water plan, we had estimated that we might complete this project for about $5 million and fund it out of a combination of cash reserves and some, a funding package. And then, at that time, we were considering maybe a funding package of about $3 million and $2 million in cash, but with, at this time with current lower interest rates, we're considering a larger package to help keep our cash reserves high and to accommodate unforeseen expenditures such as a primary clarifier that right now we're evaluating that's going to need significant repairs as well. So the budget for this project in 2020 is $5,025,000 with the rollover $109,100 from the 2019 design contract being under budget. We have about $5,134,100 of budget money out there. And so it's very close to where we started when we started going down this path. The state water plan application was for, actually for $5,665,000. But if we can move forward with bidding the project, we'd like to be able to award a bid if we get favorable bidding and to do that, we need a funding package in place. So if we have favorable biddings, we would hope to award a project this year and do some construction next year. Again, a loan application by October 1st locks in the current low interest rate of 2.5% for 20 years. And I guess, yeah, just, that's about all I've got. We'd like to advertise for bids and award a bid in December and within 30 days of opening bids, you've got to award the bids. So we would be wanting to award a bid in January for this project.
Okay. And this is a 20-year loan?
Yes.
And the lifespan of the building that we would build with this exceeds 20 years?
Greatly. It's a masonry structure. It's, uh, yeah.
So it pays-as-you-go kind of a situation with extremely low interest rate?
Yes.
A good deal that we get because we're public. Then, did you want to add something to?
Yeah, just generally, I'll add on some details about the funding source here. As Mike alluded to, we originally were thinking we would apply for roughly a $3 million loan through the SRF program and fund the remaining $2 million of the approximate $5 million total cost through cash on hand at the, in the wastewater fund. Now, because of the pending primary clarifier repairs that are looming and evident that we're going to have to incur a cost for, we're now changing that game plan to apply for the full funding for this project, which is just over $5 million as far as the engineer's estimate of probable cost. The, um, yeah, and that's why the change in the loan amount from what we were originally thinking. And we maybe didn't even show those numbers with council previously, but that was the original thought, is we'd apply for $3 million, but now that plan has changed because of the looming primary clarifier repairs. And I have some discussion on how that affects the rates and what that would look like, but I see we have some questions we could field.
Before we launch into questions, I did open the public hearing and so I would like to just see if there's anyone else that would like to come and talk about this before we start discussing. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing and entertain some questions. Adam? Councilman Lalum?
Mike, what type of building are we looking at, envisioning a two-story style building? You said masonry, is that block?
Yeah, it's part of it is split-faced block and it's, uh, it's masonry, yeah. But it's one level.
It's all one level though?
Yes.
Not two-story?
No.
So it'd be like garages in the back and then offices and stuff on the front?
That's correct. The garage doors would all be on the south side and then, so would the staff come in and they have alarms and they need a vehicle, the telemetry computer and their, the vehicle that they, whether it's in the plant or out in the sewer system, will all be in that one building, so they'll respond from that location.
And you feel this, what size are we looking at, square footage wise?
I don't remember that number. Uh, yeah, don't have that with me. You got me on that. I just did.
Is it sufficient for what we'll need for the foreseeable future?
Yes. We're adding one extra garage space and it's, uh, there's going to be, like I said, four supervisor offices and then there are four other offices for the classified staff, so there's room to grow there.
Okay.
All right. Councilman Rademski?
Does this bidding process include the demolition of the old building or is that going to be two separate bids?
It's included.
Okay.
All right. Councilman Vilhauer?
Heath or Mike, we initially were looking at $3 million, now we're applying for $5 million. Is that SRF fund large enough and will we get whatever we're asking for as far as a loan amount?
Yes. I've had several discussions with the Division of Financial Technical Assistance in Pierre and they're, we're on the state water plan for $5,665,000. They're prepared to give us that much in a loan if we needed it, the whole.
Boy, at that low interest rate, I'd say let's take advantage of as much as we can.
I see someone's going to talk about rates. Who put that up?
That's on my computer, Mayor.
Okay, are you going to talk about it?
I can, yes, if you're prepared or?
Well, we'll get to more questions here. Councilman Bueller?
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, prior to the new folks on the council, you had blueprints and you had some graphics you showed that showed the floor plan, the layout. They haven't had, I don't think, an opportunity to see all that information and how this is laid out, the design and do we, I mean, if you're not prepared, I don't expect you to try to dig that out right now, but I just want to understand one thing. If we decide that this is what we're going to do, are we looking at this tonight to approve going out for bids or what are we doing? I just want to be clear on what we're doing.
Yeah.
Okay, it's just an application for a loan.
Yeah, tonight's action would be the approval of the loan going to the state, submitting a loan on behalf of the city for the amount.
A request for a loan.
Okay.
And then?
And that doesn't mean that we have to follow through on that loan, is that what you're saying?
We have preliminary design and we would finish that, then they'll get a chance to see.
Okay, that's all, that's my thing. I think everybody needs to be privy to this whole layout and we need to look at this structure and see if this is in fact what we really need. And Mike, I'm not trying to poo-poo the project, don't get me wrong, but I just think that everybody needs that opportunity before we decide on what it is, the final product's going to be and what we do want, how we want to find it.
Welcome any of you to come out and take a look at the plans and we're at 99% design right now and so if you'd like to see it, come on out and I'll have stuff lined up so we can look it over.
This is a pretty big deal. Would it be, would it be a good idea maybe to have set up some sort of, like a couple of sit downs, five of us here, five of us there? We could all get together and have a, I mean, some of us have been through it, but it's been a while.
Yeah.
So it would be nice to, just a thought, Mike, it's something you might want to do.
Yeah, we'd be happy to accommodate that.
Councilman White?
The clarifier, so when are we looking at replacing that and then is it a $2 million project?
You know, I was supposed to get a preliminary. Right now they're doing the evaluation on repair versus replacement. We know that the dome over that structure is about a million dollar dome because we just had some paid for by insurance. That is in perfect condition, that'll be salvaged. We know that the drive is about 23 years old and I would anticipate getting 50 years out of that piece of equipment, so we would hope to bring that along with us as well. And so I don't have that number tonight. They were going to try and give me a rough before the evaluation is done on email today, but I did not get that. But what's, one of the things that's changed with that clarifier, it was identified, the deed was identified in 2011 and it's a circular concrete tank and around that tank, all around the circumference of that is, it's a, it's a channel called a launder and it's just a concrete channel, so as that tank overflows, in a circular, all the water that overflows is captured. That's starting to pull away from the tank and break up. So whether they can cut that up and use portions of that and re-fix it to the sidewall of the tank is unknown, so the concrete work is quite big there. But I think the drive we would save, the catwalk we would save, the dome we would save, but then there would be the center column, which is the stand which holds the drive unit in this tank, that has rusted through. It's, this tank, the design of the clarifier was from November 1959, it was constructed in 1960. And so some of that steel is in pretty rough shape and so they're just going, they're looking at the condition of the concrete and condition of the steel and say, okay, the most cost-effective approach is this and this is what we recommend and we'd like to design that for you to get that thing up and running again.
The, with the condition of that being built back in the 60s, then when we do come to replace it in a couple of years, is the EPA going to step in and are we going to meet qualifications or is it?
Oh yeah, we'll be fine. This, this, this tank, right now, it's, like I said, it's 59 years old and, but when you build a tank like this, you coat the steel and everything. Well now, at this point, the coating, and we have recoated it, but the coating has failed again and the steel is weak and thin and places it's rusted through, so. But I don't have that number tonight, but we don't know what it's going to be, so that's kind of where we want to go tonight.
Councilman Bueller?
Thank you, Mayor. Mike, you gave me a tour of that place out there and that was great. I mean, that was invaluable to me and I, for those of you who haven't had that opportunity, you know, if there's a way to set something up with Mike to go look at how that's all constructed and what it all does, and then see the old facility.
Well, yeah, and you could see the operations shop and see that the walls are leaning and cracked and we could look at this clarifier and you could see the administration building we have with this limited functionality, what we've had for 24 years, which is not the standard in the industry, we'll leave it at that.
That was kind.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Those are good questions. We ready for action then? Oh.
Should?
Oh, yes, okay. He was going to talk about the rates.
Touch on the rate information. So real quickly here, the funding for this, as part of this SRF loan, we have to show on that application how we're going to fund the payback of that loan. And in talking with Kristen and Mike, we've derived a plan that we feel is appropriate and necessary in order to move forward to this and that the state would likely support as an agreeable way to fund this, these loan, this loan repayment. Our, what that comes down to is the sewer rates and how they're assessed. Right now, we have a, what's called a fixed rate or a flat rate user charge for our sanitary sewer system and that amount that every resident pays is $21.50 each month. That rate is broken out into two components. There's a base rate component that is charged generally for operations and maintaining the system and then there are surcharges on top of that base rate. Right now, our split is roughly $12.50 for the base rate and $9.50 for the surcharge. That surcharge that we currently have on our $21.50 monthly rate is from past loans, past funding commitments that we have that have tied us to add $9.50 per month surcharge to our base rate. I just want a quick show, I've got a couple diagrams here. This comes from a regional study, a regional utility study done by a consulting firm, AE2S, and they do this region-wide and it's a pretty large region actually that it covers. It extends over into Colorado, but then closer to us in Iowa, Minnesota, Montana, Nebraska, North Dakota, South Dakota, Utah, Wisconsin and Wyoming. And they do a very good job in here assessing user rates for all different types of utilities. This graph that I have pulled up right now is the historic monthly charges for 6,000 gallon usage and you can see on here there's a water and a wastewater fee associated that is an average dollar per month for that average gallons of usage. This is for towns or cities of 5,000 or more in population and if you look at 2019, we're up on the wastewater category over $35 on average per month for sewer usage in this regional study. Now, if you go down back to 2009, 2008, you see that we then start to see the numbers that we, the city of Watertown, currently charge for our wastewater usage at about $21.50 per month. So you have to go back about 10 years in averages to get down to the level that we're currently charging our community water utility rates. I have one more diagram here, I'll show you quickly. This is South Dakota specifically and this gives a demonstration, it's a real good chart that shows the hierarchy of wastewater utility charges, again on a per-month basis, from all the respondent communities that filled out this survey. You can see that Watertown is at the bottom of the list currently. I'll note that these are 2018 numbers, they just released their 2019 survey, but I didn't have access to those numbers here before the meeting. But we are at the bottom of that list at $21.50 per month and you can see the other extreme end of the, of the survey here is Harrisburg, South Dakota at $75.44 per month. The reason I wanted to show these is because it highlights, you know, what it is we would be proposing is roughly a $2 to $3 per month user fee increase in order to cover the expense of paying back this loan. That $2 to $3 increase, of course, would bring our $21.50 up to either $23 to $24.50 per month. And that would be a $2 to $3 increase on the surcharge portion of our utility rate. The base portion of that rate would remain the same. And I just wanted you to know what these numbers looked like regionally and within South Dakota so that you had a rough idea of where we were at with our utility rate for wastewater.
Cannot see those numbers. Where would that put us?
Just above T. T is at $22.
So we, instead of bottom, we'd be second low?
Second from bottom.
Councilman Roby?
Is that better?
How long, rephrase, when was the last time we bumped that up?
2011.
That's very interesting.
Another component I need to mention is we do have the utility rate study planned for next year as well and that will look at whether we need to adjust our base rate. But in all transparency here, I wanted to make sure the council was aware of that. We do have that pending rate study that would look at whether that base rate needs to be adjusted or not, but this would be specifically a surcharge adjustment to pay off the terms of this loan.
All right. Councilman Albertson?
Heath, you mentioned the $9.50 was to pay off debt from before. What are we paying off and how soon do we have that paid off?
I will defer to Kristen for that information.
We have SRF loan 5, 7, 7 NPS and 9. 5 was the Lake Campezka lift stations and some other projects.
Sanitary sewer.
7 was First Avenue North and then the NPS one was a, um, a small Upper Big Sioux and then 9 was a headworks project. So 9's got quite a bit of time left on it, that was our newest one.
Was that a 20-year?
Yes, yeah, they're all 20 years.
So it was like about 2010 or 11 when it kicked in?
Yeah, actually, all of them were kind of right around the 2008, 2009 and then 2011, so they still have, you know, quite a few years left to pay. I will point out too with this process, once we do the application, the state also works to make sure that we have that right surcharge to cover the loan. There's all the debt requirements that we have to make sure we do, so.
All right. Other questions? Councilman White?
So can the state set that rate for us or do we get to set that rate then if we're too low?
Well, if we were too low, they would definitely not approve that. The other piece of this is these are actually bonds that are being sold, so then we will have bond council as part of this. There's a resolution, let me see, um, resolution 924 was actually the last resolution that we did and that was where we established all the different rates. And like I said, that's part of bond council. When this application goes through and if we proceed, then they will help to make sure all the coverage is there as well, because there are quite a few requirements with that.
And I think Kristen, I'm accurate in saying this, but we actually incorporate in our recommended rate adjustment, a little bit of a safety factor, if you will, over and above what the state would even require.
We do. When we first initially looked at it, it's required to have 110% of debt coverage. You kind of always want to give yourself a little bit of extra room, so that is a little bit higher, but if customer whatever leave, anything like that, you never want to dip below. So then each year with these SRF loans, we do provide documentation to the state that we have kept enough coverage on these loans. So like I said, if one big customer whatever come off, you don't want your revenues to go under, so.
All right. Any other questions? All right, thanks. Good discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thanks, Mike. Item number five is ordinance number 19-12 for the 2020 city budget appropriation.
So moved.
I have a motion by Vilhauer and a second by Lalum and I would like Kristen to tell us about this one.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you is the second reading of the 2020 budget. There are no changes from the first reading. This incorporated everything that we have discussed up until this time. With the approval of this, then we proceed for 2020. The budget does have to be approved by September 30th.
All right. Councilman Vilhauer?
Kristen, I want to make sure we all understand, this does include the additional municipal utility transfer amount that we have talked about the last several weeks, the 764,000. So that does, that is reflected as a revenues item there, in there?
That is correct. It was two pieces. The transfer revenue was included as well as on the expenditure side, the hydrant and the street lighting.
Okay. It does not include anything for a new street assessment, which we have talked about?
That is correct.
Nor any stormwater assessment, correct?
Neither of those revenues are in this current budget.
Now, what is procedurally, if, okay, we pass it tonight and let's say that a month from now, we realize these numbers are not going to bear out, what is our process then if we need to amend this?
Our process at that time, I believe, is we will come back to the table and we will determine where our shortfall is, how much that is, and then we do have a few options that we can look at, I guess, changing up, whether it be personnel, you know, we have that wage study and we should know what that is even here within about a month.
Okay. And then just a comment, I guess as I look, I support the budget, I've been part of the process the last couple of months, but one number that I do want to point out that does concern me, if we go to the third, the third page section, I guess what section? if we go to the third page section, I guess, what section two, the third page, the number that concerns me is, I realize we budget conservatively, that, you know, hopefully revenue is going to come in stronger than budget, expenditures less than budget. But assuming that everything does bear out exactly dollar for dollar like we're budgeting, the number that concerns me is less unappropriated fund balance, December 31st, 2020, $3,135,000. That is not much of a general fund balance. I mean, that's what, roughly two months' worth of expenditures that we'd be looking at at that point. So just to put a number on, you know, where our general fund is and where it could conceivably be in a relatively short period of time is cause for concern. Just a comment on my part.
Thank you. Councilman Bueller?
Quick question. Do you recall when we've ever exceeded that amount? Have we requested anything that would exceed that amount at any time in the past?
In regards of exceeding?
The fund balance that Glenn's talking about, the three?
The three?
Yep.
It has been quite a while since it has been that low. The one thing that I will say is we do have quite a bit set aside right now in the capital outlay portion. It's a little over 2 million. So that's higher sometimes than it has been in the past. So those two together are what kind of works for your cash, really. I will say the way we do our capital outlay is we do not restrict it as far as legally restricted. The council would have the opportunity, if you wanted to move any of that around, if we felt that we needed to, we could slow down on some of the capital. So it is lower than, you know, it has been. I definitely think we need to be careful. But that is why we've had plenty of the discussions in regards to a few other revenue sources. And I think that's what we're finding, is we're just going to have to kind of think outside of the box a little bit when it comes to revenue.
Right. Any other questions or comments? All right, seeing none, I will look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number six is the first reading of ordinance number 19-09, a zoning text amendment to Title 21 of the Revised Ordinances of the City of Watertown, creating Chapter 21.56 DT Downtown Overlay District. And this is just the first reading, so no action is required. Heath, would you tell us about it?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So council, if you recall, this item was before you back in August, I believe August 5th of this year. And after discussion, it was sent back through the Planning Commission. We wanted to look at revising the boundaries of this downtown overlay district that would essentially affect and put into place aesthetic regulations to help preserve the historic nature and the preservation of that downtown district. We have done that. We've, Brandy, with staff here, our urban planner, Brandy Hampton, has worked with me and the Planning Commissioners and come up with a new boundary that has a little bit expanded from what it was previously. And has since passed the Planning Commission again. And they voted to send that back up to the city council, and it's here before you tonight for first reading. Brandy has some detailed maps. She can show the new boundary and talk through that, and then we can help answer any questions you might have.
Yes, thank you, Heath. So up here on the GIS, you'll see there's three different boundaries. Previously, we had went with the Historic Preservation District, which, when we brought it to council on August 5th, there was some concerns about the jogs and not having the complete streets in the boundary. So that is the white boundary. And then the black boundary here that's hatched, that is the Urban Renewal District. And then this blue boundary is what we are proposing for the downtown overlay district to be.
Could you go through those one more time, what the various different boundaries are?
Yep. So, and I can turn some off, so it's easier to see. So this white boundary, that's the Historic Preservation District. And then the black boundary is the Urban Renewal District. And then the blue is the downtown overlay district that's being proposed. And so I'll turn on the Historic Preservation District, too, to show the difference. So we incorporated some of both. So all of the Historic Preservation District is within this downtown overlay boundary. And then we did include some of the Urban Renewal District as well. But it did expand into residential zoning, so we wanted to avoid that. There is some existing residences within the C1 district currently, but if they were to come forth and do something, they would have the issue of being a residence in a commercial district to begin with. So we would address it at that point.
Okay, so we're looking at the blue line?
Yes, yep.
Okay. Councilman Roby?
The issue I raised last time was the boundary went down a street. So you could have somebody on one side of the street that has to abide by the regulations, somebody the other side that doesn't. How does this address that?
So for the most part, we did, so we included all of First Avenue, which originally we only went up to First Avenue, the south side of it. And then otherwise, there are some jogs there where there are only half streets included. But we felt that it was the best way to go about it, instead of running through alleys, because there would have to be at some point that we couldn't have the complete street, just so we had it disconnected, I guess.
And I think part of that discussion, Brandy, too, had to do with current uses in those areas. Some heavily residential versus commercial across the street. Is that a fact as well?
Yep.
A quick follow-up then. That was well-vetted when the Planning Commission went through it. That issue got discussed, and they're comfortable with that.
Yes, yep. And Plan Commission has been working with this ordinance since March. So it'll be nice to get something in the books.
It's tough to make it perfect. Lot by lot, and a lot of these aren't even lots. They're parcels where people have sold off half of the lot to someone else, and they've got two different buildings on one lot, and it...
And that will be coming, that issue.
But you are correct, Councilman Roby. That was one of the highlighted points on why it was brought back to them, that we vetted through the Planning Commission. We didn't call it the Roby factor when we took it back to them, but we did point out that was one of the reasons why.
Are there other questions for Brandy or Heath? Councilman Bueller?
Hi, Brandy.
Hey.
Question, how are we going to communicate this to the folks that are in that district? I mean, we're not going to wait till they come in with a building permit to tell them. Is there, what's our plan to communicate that?
Right. So I did send certified mailings to, or no, not certified, just mailings, and that is per state law, that we notify anybody that will be within this boundary. And I haven't received much feedback. Just people called, just wanting clarification on things, just to know how it will affect them. But I did outline that in the letter, too.
And do you remember how many property owners that affected, Brandy, off the top of your head?
146, I believe.
Councilman Manti?
And then along with the letters, when somebody comes up to get a building permit or talk to somebody about changes that they might want to make within the overlay district, are you guys ready with, here you go, so that, you know, just guidelines? And do you see what I'm saying, so that they have a little working plan, so that they can?
Right. And so when they come up, and so the only time that this overlay district will affect them is if they're doing substantial improvement, which is the 50% of their assessed value of their structure, and then otherwise new construction. So, and what's nice, too, is having these overlay districts on the GIS, it'll be brought up to Ken or mine or Keith's attention right away, that they are within the district. And then we'll walk them through what that means and what requirements they'll be needing to adhere to.
Other questions? Councilman Hoyer?
Just confirming, since I'm in the ward, existing structures, totally grandfathered, good to go. And they're tracking that already in the mailing that went out, that they're going to be grandfathered just as they are. Nothing's changing unless they do meet the requirements that you mentioned.
Yes. Yep, correct.
All right. We will move on. Item number seven is approval of City of Watertown policy regarding private citizens in public space. A motion by Y and a second by Holene. Okay, I'll talk about this one. This idea came up to me in a mayor's meeting. First-class mayors in the state of South Dakota meet twice a year. And one of the issues that came up was that several of the cities have experienced some issues and have wanted to talk about it. And one city, actually Aberdeen, had drafted a policy that is considerably more involved than this and goes in great detail to define all of the terms involved. This is a very simple model of a policy which just states that these buildings that we have in the public grounds are owned by the public, but we still have a policy on what they can and can't do. So you can come into a public building when it's open, but you can't come in when it's closed. And there are certain areas in the public building that are off limits unless you have permission. So if someone wants to come in and videotape, they can do that in a lobby, like the open area. But they can't come in and go behind someone's desk and do it without permission. And so it's pretty specific for that. And then also, you have a right to picket or to gather signatures on public grounds as long as you're not hindering the purpose of the public grounds. And you can't be getting in people's way or blocking them or offending people. So this is just pretty basic and simple. If you're blocking the doorway, that's not okay. If you're standing and people are walking by you, you can stand there just like anyone else and request that they stop. You can't stop them. That's all this policy says. And if the council would like to further define what is okay and what isn't okay, we can get into that. I just wanted to get something out here quickly before we have an issue, because we haven't had an issue, but then we don't have a policy either. And I want the city employees to understand that they have a right to tell a citizen who is blocking them or keeping them from doing their work or trying to come into their personal space, that they have a right to say, that's not okay, please step back into the lobby or, you know, move away. And so that they're prepared if the issue would ever come up. So this is pretty simple and basic. Does anybody have any questions about it? Councilman Bueller?
Thank you, Mayor. I think we talked about this before last time we had an opportunity to look at this. The city employee, it says at the bottom of the last sentence, we talked about, do we need to specify that more or not? Maybe we don't, but I'm thinking, you know, a guy from the street department could say, yeah, it's okay for you to go behind so-and-so's desk. I just wonder if we need to clarify that.
The City of Aberdeen did go into great detail and listed off. And I think, I personally trust the city employees to have good judgment. And I don't want to assume that they can't think for themselves about whether it's appropriate, a person being a street department employee telling someone they can go behind someone's desk in the wastewater department or in City Hall. I just don't think that's going to be an issue. I think it's a disciplinary issue if we're running into a case where someone's inappropriate. Someone, you know, and that probably wouldn't happen, but you could see maybe someone from a department in City Hall who happens to be standing in a different department and giving permission to someone. I just don't think our city employees are that clueless where we would need to spell that out in a policy.
That's not what I was, I wasn't trying to make it look like that. But I just, you know, like you just said, somebody could say, yeah, just go over behind her desk over there.
I think that's an education matter, and I wanted to get this out. I will circulate it to all of the city employees, and I'll mention that, that, you know, use your judgment to, if you're in someone else's space, obviously, don't give permissions. It's not appropriate. You can control your own space, and that is appropriate. I don't know that we really need to get more detailed than that. Councilman Hoyer?
I definitely think it's a step in the right direction. I do think we need to maybe go into a little more definition on the public's access to and use of such public property may be limited or denied if it will hinder, disrupt, or harm the intended and purpose of each respective place. I just worry that's a little too vague, and we might need to just finesse that a little bit more. I just worry that, I don't think Watertown, we're going to see a lot of picketing or protesting in our future. I hope not. But if we do, I think that we need to make sure that we're protecting both sides adequately, making sure it's clear that we're not able to overstep or prohibit someone because we decide to interpret something a certain way. So I'm not saying we would, but again, maybe we just need to define that a little bit better.
Well, I think what I'll do is, I think Aberdeen's policy is probably the opposite of this policy. I'll circulate that. And if there are some elements of it that you think we should modify, but meanwhile, we can approve this and I'll circulate it if you're feeling that it's approvable at this point. I'd just like to get going with it and let the city employees know. Because, you know, I'd rather be prepared, at least in general terms, than not.
Agreed. Something on the books is better than nothing, so.
Right, thank you. Councilman Vilhauer?
Do the city employees know that this is coming, or has it been discussed? I mean, I don't want to all of a sudden look like that where, you know, you're foisting. I shouldn't say foisting, that's a bad choice of words. But, you know, giving a policy out there without some input from the employees. So I guess I'm just saying, is there any grounds for somebody being object to this as an employee? Or are we going to be okay?
This protects the safety of the employees, and I think not having it is a bad idea. I think it's good to just have a basic, bare-bones policy that protects them. Really, safety should be our number-one priority.
And I agree. I guess my question, maybe it should have been phrased from the standpoint of, is this adequate for the employees, or should we have gotten input from them as far as something needed more? Or you're saying it's just a starting point?
Right. And, I mean, this will get it out there, and then we can revise and add to it and modify it. If, I did bring this up with the department heads, but if, you know, whether they shared it with their subordinates or not, I doubt it because it wasn't official yet. But I'm sure they will once it's adopted by the council. And I think that we could even, I don't know if we'd want to make an ordinance about it or a resolution, make it a little more formal with a document that way. We could also do that if the council desires. Any other comments or questions? Councilman Lalum?
I'm kind of with Michael on this. The only thing I would say is if there's something that's not allowable or, you know, if we don't want to have people in there picketing or protesting or whatever. I mean, obviously disruptive would come into that particular item, but, you know, if we, you know, similar to like courthouse not allowing political stuff on there within 30 days of election, something along those lines. I mean, that would be something that might pop up where they're trying to collect signatures or whatever, which is fine, but if it's, you know, for a political reason or something along those lines, I know they're very prohibitive with that, with the voting.
I think, yeah, state law, we're prohibited. It's, you know, if this is a polling place, it's prohibited here as well.
Just so that they're aware of that as well.
Right, yep. Councilman Manti?
Are there going to be any associated consequences with this actions, in far as the violator?
I don't think so. I was very careful, and obviously I worked with the city attorney, Matt, to make sure I'm not violating anyone's rights with this. This is very respectful and, in fact, empowers people with their rights as long as they're not hindering or harming. I mean, why?
That's the person I'm talking about. So if you have a public person who comes in and they, you know, kind of push past and into Matt's office, for example, and they're asked to leave, and they say, you know, I'm going to sit here in the lobby and block people from coming in or whatever, are there any consequences to that public person, you know, violating this policy?
I'm sure Matt would handle that very well. Me, on the other hand? I'm empowered by this to know that I can say, it's inappropriate that you walked into my office. Please leave, and if they don't, I'll call the police. And then, I mean, that tells me, they need my permission.
And then, I mean, that tells me, they need my permission to be in my space. And I don't know, I mean, if you're just an employee doing your job at your desk and someone says, "This is a public building, I have a right to be right here," telling the employees their rights that they need permission to be anywhere other than the lobby areas, basically. And if you haven't granted it, you have every right to say, "Sorry, Charlie, your rights end at the end of that lobby until you get my permission."
And what about our staff that does a lot of their work off-site, like in a public park or on a public street? How, you know, how far away do they have to let, make those people go so they can still do their job? Do you see what I'm saying, that there's other factors? I love this, I mean, but I'm just thinking, you know, what if somebody's on the street department is doing something that people are like, "No, no, no," you know, or trees, "Don't cut down that tree." And I chain themselves to the tree, so what do we do?
I heard it's been done elsewhere.
Wanted to make sure that there was remedy for all the staff to be able to continue to do their job even after asking these people what to do and not get in, not the staff get in trouble. You know what I'm saying? They want, they need to understand again that they're safe if they take actions such as, "I'm going to call the police," or "I'm going to call my supervisor."
Right, and I think this, the intention anyway is to clarify, yes, citizens have a right to be on public property or in a public building at appropriate times and as long as they're not hindering the purpose or blocking someone or harming in any way. That doesn't mean that they have rights to be wherever they want, whenever they want. This clarifies that. So I think it's, it's helpful on both ends of the spectrum, setting some pretty general boundaries for both people who want to collect signatures, say, and the city employee maybe doesn't know if that's okay. Okay, they can be there, they're in the lobby, I guess that's fine. They're not blocking, they're not, people can go about their business and they're not harming them. Or, you know, 50 of them enter the lobby and no one can come in to pay their bill. That's an issue. And that empowers the employee to act.
I think it does demonstrate to the public that we're not going to block them unless they're behaving in a bad way. Otherwise, they have access to every property, you know, so I.
Yes.
So I think it gives the citizens a feeling of like, "Okay, this is good, and I'm not going to go behind Matt's desk." So, you know, but it's transparency for the public, I think, you know, saying that, "Yeah, you can be here, but you can't interfere with..." And that's pretty common for any business, you know, or any organization or any, you know, structure. You can't, you can do it to this far, but you can't, as far as your rights go, but you can't interfere, so.
Yep. Councilwoman Villahauer?
As to the first paragraph, you know, I share some of the same concerns that Michael pointed out. But inherently, there is an enforcement and an education aspect to this, too. I mean, staff, I guess I'm looking at our police department in particular, need to be aware of what is allowed because let's say somebody, somebody's picking in a park and a neighbor calls the police department. Well, they're going to need to know what the rules are too as far as what kind of enforcement is going to be allowed or what, what action is allowed or not allowed on the part of someone.
I should add that Police Chief Lee McPeak helped with this, too, and did review it. And I would venture to say the police staff are all, this is what they do. They're very well-informed. They know, they know what's appropriate and what's allowable and what's legal and what isn't.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Yeah. And they, yeah, they were helpful in putting this together. Councilwoman Lallum?
The only other thing I might put in would be if there's some sort of a safety issue that might come up with that. I mean, if we're in a public park and, say, we have flooding or something, or they're doing construction and someone's over there, that would might be the only thing that you want to put in.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Where someone in an active construction zone.
Yes, it's a public park, but it's flooding right now and it's dangerous, so.
Yes.
Stay away, don't go around the barricades.
So, I mean, that might be something that we need to add to it just so that if it is a safety concern, they're not allowed there.
Right, yep. Good input. All right. Anything else? All right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Is there any old business? Oh, Councilwoman Robey?
Heath.
Get an update on Cherry Creek, please.
Absolutely, Councilwoman Robey. Latest update I have is similar to the last update where, you know, the delineation was determined, had been made, and we're, we have started discussions as of last week with the Corps of Engineers on what they would allow us to do in that delineated, that wetland delineated area. I think the two options that, that makes sense, that they would entertain is either A, we can regrade the channel as it lies and promote some more positive drainage through it, or B, realign it a little bit further to the north, further away from the backside of the lots of the residents that have had concern with this channel in the past. And those are really the two options that we've began discussions with the Corps of Engineers on. Have not gotten any direct feedback from them, which way they would prefer. And once they give us some verbal guidance on what they would allow, we would have to do a formal application for that regrading effort that they would then take roughly three to four weeks to review and actually give us a permit to do that work. And that's where we're at right now, is we began the discussions with the Corps and anticipate proceeding with the formal application pending their feedback from our initial discussions.
Councilwoman Rademski, did you have a comment?
Yeah, was there any, has anything been done about potentially putting a four-way stop at Second Street and Fourteenth Avenue Northwest?
Is that something you brought up before?
I brought that up a couple of months ago.
I can speak to that, Mayor, if you wish. Yes, Councilwoman Rademski, I met with the police chief and the street superintendent and myself as a city engineer in exploring that option. There was also a request down on, in the downtown area here on First and Kemp, I believe, was the other location. The one up on Second and Fourteenth, from a technical standpoint, meeting the qualifications for a four-way stop, that side-street traffic just doesn't generate the amount that's needed to technically qualify it for a four-way stop. Now, we haven't done any formal counts up there, but just by, I happen to live up in that area and observing it, I'm fairly confident that if we were to do counts up there, it wouldn't justify a four-way stop. I think that at this time, my recommendation would be to let the Valley View subdivision continue to develop out, continue to monitor and be sensitive to the impacts that the increased development has on that intersection. And then perhaps at some point in the future, it could possibly warrant a four-way stop based on that increased traffic generation from the subdivision building out further. I do know at peak times, it is more difficult, but on the off-peak times, it's really not. And so then it becomes a conflict of if it's worth disrupting that Fourteenth heavy traffic for the times that the side-street, Second Avenue, excuse me, Second Street is not busy. That's where weighing those options out, I would lean towards heating caution to putting in a four-way because of those off-peak times really not justifying it very well at all.
All right, thank you. Councilman Hoyer? Oh, did you?
Yeah, I got to follow up. What about a flashing light, like a crosswalk or something along those lines? I'm guessing what Jason's talking about is about 8:10 in the morning and 3:30, and then Sunday mornings, I would guess, is probably the peak times on those. Just a, you know, watch for pedestrians. I do see a lot of kids riding bike there as well. There's that bike path on Fourteenth. So maybe just something to get people, they're driving fast is really what it comes down to. So, I don't know, a flasher.
Is there, is, with the concern, excuse me, Councilwoman Lallum, just for clarity, would the concern be for pedestrians crossing Fourteenth on Second? Is that the?
Is that your concern, Jason, or is it traffic?
It's just the concern from a citizen up there that the more that gets developed, it's real difficult to get onto Fourteenth from Second Avenue.
So it's not from my side-street?
Turning left is difficult. I think we need to watch the warrants, and we can do traffic counts, too, periodically to see how it grows. All right, Councilman Hoyer?
So just follow up from last time with crosswalks and stuff, this is for you, Heath. But looking at First Avenue Northeast and then First Avenue Southeast here in the downtown, maybe I just missed the schedule, but are we looking at finishing out those crosswalks that are currently missing? I mean, like even out in front of this building, there isn't one there, so.
Painting?
Correct, yep.
Yeah, great question, Councilman Hoyer. The response to that one would be that the street department hasn't obviously initiated those crosswalks being painted, and they did not get it done in one fell swoop, and they do intend on coming back. Now, I can't speak specifically to the intersections that they have remaining, and Superintendent Bainon is still here, but I do know they anticipate coming back to do additional crosswalks throughout the downtown area.
First Avenue South, staff did start, I think, this morning, striping that. I don't know if, I haven't been down it today, but we are working on that. We are short-staffed in our sign and signal department, so we lost a fellow to a different department here about a month and a half ago, so we're way behind.
Thank you.
All right, painful. Any other old business? Councilwoman Albertson?
Just, is there anything you can add regarding to the ice rinks? I continue to get people asking, so is there anything new that you can add?
Conversations are ongoing, and I think that's, that's what I should, would like people to know, is that there isn't anything to report. That doesn't mean that nothing's going on, and there are a lot of discussion going on amongst the council, and we're working on that. I hope to be able to make an announcement soon. Okay, other old business? I do have a piece of new business that I would like to announce that Terry Kelly has been appointed as the interim director of Parks, Recreation, and Forestry Department. And he's here, so if you want to wave, Terry. And that was not formally approved by the Park Department, although I did request their input on that, and everyone was strongly in favor of having Terry act as the director in the interim while we're advertising for a new director. Is there any other new business? Councilwoman Villahauer?
Is there anything that, it was a big public event last week at North Shore, and there were several in the room that were here concerning the Stony Point, proposed Stony Point development plans. Anything that you care to say? I don't believe you had a chance to be there, so maybe I'm catching you off-guard with this, Mayor, but I know it was a big event and generated a lot of interest, and I'm sure going to be generating a lot of questions. Any comments you care to make on that?
Well, I would like to point out that they're, they mentioned that they're, they know they're going to need approval of some zoning requests that they'll be making. They have not made any requests for zoning, they haven't made any requests for subdivision. The only thing that they've requested is grading, and they have complied with all of the requirements for grading permits. And they've had several grading permits, and there's another one pending. Heath, you want to add to that?
No, that's exactly right, Mayor. We've issued three grading permits for that entire area, and that's the extent of the submittals that we've received in the engineering and building offices.
To their credit, they are very carefully going step by step and not trying to leapfrog ahead, and they're taking it one step at a time and getting the required permits in advance. So I appreciate that very much. Councilman Hollein?
Thank you. I would just piggyback off of that. I had the pleasure of being at that meeting, and I kept thinking that it would sure be nice if we, as a city, had a comprehensive plan as to what we were going to do with our natural resources, specifically our lakes moving forward, so that when something like this comes forward, we have some sort of a policy on what we allow, what we don't allow, as opposed to doing it at an ad hoc, one-up measure. I think it would be nice if we started that discussion now.
We do have the Lake Kempeska Master Plan, which is really close to being approved, and also our comprehensive city plan is, it's been in the works for several years and also close to being approved. And we don't ever get down into the details in a comprehensive plan of, of what we would allow in a development. The general terms, people can do what they want with their property in general ways. So everything that they're doing is allowable. They're, I don't know that we would have needed to do anything in advance to be prepared to deal with their requests. There's just so little property left at the lake that isn't already developed. We are looking at some other changes to our regulations to allow different kinds of development at the lake because the lake is unique, but nothing is ready yet to come to the council or to the public. Thank you for that, Councilman Hoyer?
Well, I'll just say to that, about a month or so back, I did submit a preliminary document to start working on a potential zoning for the lake for development. So, I mean, we do have a little bit going on it in that direction, just foreseeing with some of those other zonings that we passed a while back there that we were likely going to see some more development. So there's things in the works, we just got to get moving on them. But for other new business, I did have one other thing. So, all innocent fun, for sure, but during homecoming, as their folks were coming down Kemp in their bouncy-bounce vehicles, which I remember doing as well, we might want to look at in the future advising them to remove the trailer hitches because we can sawzall through the roof of a van pretty easy. We might want to curb off those trailer hitches because as I was watching the parade, the hitches were digging into that chip seal like no other, so there's some good chunks out of it right now.
Great.
Yeah, right, so just something to look at if you go down Kemp. Might want to make sure there wasn't anything too serious to that, but definitely saw some chunks coming out, so.
Most of those hitches can just come right out.
Oh, yeah, they were hitting the ground nice and hard, so.
All right, anything else? Okay, are there any liaison member reports?
I've got one here.
Okay, Councilwoman Rademski?
Back to Valley View edition. I got a call from a citizen that got a call from a courier company that said, "I can't deliver your package because I don't know where you live." There's, when are we going to get some signage up there identifying the streets in that area?
Valley View?
Looks like Rob has some information here, I'll refer to him.
It's funny you mention that because we just talked about that today. We do have the signs for Valley View. We're just looking at the locations, we have to install them, so, on the corner, so. We'll have them up pretty soon.
Now, as far as the formal addressing, of course, that entire subdivision and the lots have been plotted. Everything that's pulled a billing permit has a, an address associated with it. So as far as the GIS documentation and the county records and Google Maps and things like that, that should start populating those, those resources with the addresses that have been issued for the permitted lots.
All right, any other new business? Councilwoman Lallum?
I don't, I'm not sure if the public's been aware of this yet, but I know the council did get an email that a Watertown resident that has been successful in businesses donating 120 Strider bikes to the elementary schools. I believe it's next, or this Friday, at 10:00 a.m. at Jefferson. It's Jesse Jerns of Legend Suspension. I believe he graduated in '92, I believe. And then with Ryan McFarlane, the CEO and founder of Strider Bikes, so basically pedalist bikes to help kids learn how to ride bikes. So they're donating 120 of those Friday, 10:00 o'clock at Jefferson. So it's a pretty, pretty cool deal. They're going to hand them out to the different grade schools so that the kids can learn.
Very nice, very nice, that's wonderful. Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. I'll be there, by the way, I think the public's welcome to come. Any liaison member reports? None? We have no reason to go into executive session tonight, so, ready to, motion to adjourn. We have a motion by Lallum and a second by Rademski or Albertson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Thank you.